Right on time.
Great. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to start this meeting by recognizing that the area that we call the Fraser Valley Regional District has been home to indigenous peoples for generations. There are thirty-one communities with reserved lands in the FBRD's jurisdiction and as many as sixty-nine groups with interests in the area. This diverse landscape means that there are many different viewpoints that need to be considered when we make decisions. Because what we decide as local government can affect everyone in different ways now and in the future. So as part of our collective responsibility, I commit that we continually examine the work we do to ensure that our projects, plans, initiatives, and discussion are guided by the principles of inclusion, collaboration, and reconciliation today and in the future. So with that in mind, I would like to call to order the January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Fraser Valley Regional District Board of Directors Committee of the Whole. Take it away, Ms. Kinaman.
Thank you. So just looking for approval of the agenda, addenda, and late items.
No move, Madam Chair.
Move by Director Fazio, second by Director Gibson, all in favor. Motion's carried. Next item.
Four point one is the FBRD two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-nine financial plan. And this is the time of year that I get to just turn things right on over to our finance team, Kelly Lonsborough, our CFO, and Beth Klein.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kinaman. Good afternoon, board members and members of the public. I'm Kelly Lonsborough, the Director of Corporate Services and Chief Financial Officer. My colleague, Beth Klein, FBRD's Controller, and I will be walking you through the draft financial plan for two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-nine. This year's financial plan is the continuation of a formal asset management program, expanded public engagement, and a more fulsome and robust review and approval process for regional grants and aid. We know that these are trying economic times for many community members who are experiencing large cost increases in many aspects of their lives. We are focused on making responsible choices to ensure a slow and predictable tax bill to avoid dramatic shockwaves in the future as much as possible. By way of background, the FBRD manages approximately one hundred and fourteen unique service areas, all with distinct purposes, unique tax spaces, and specific revenues and expenses that cannot be shared with other service areas. A service area could be a water system or a sewer system that only certain properties pay into, or a full electoral area for certain shared services, or a regional service area that is applicable to all property owners in the FBRD. As each service area is established by bylaw, it is essential that we manage the funds effectively on a service area-by-service-area basis. At this phase of the financial planning process, today will mark the conclusion of the preparation stages of all budgets. Included in the materials today are the summaries of the electoral area budgets that have been endorsed by electoral area directors. Today's focus at the Committee of the Whole is to review the regional and subregional service area budgets. The layout of the materials is organized differently than prior years. This year's presentation is presented in the same groupings as in the FBRD's year-end financial statements. We will go through each section and present the notable budgets and are more than happy to dive into any of the budgets within the package. Today, we are looking for support to that next step in the financial plan process. At the conclusion of each section, we will seek a motion of support. As part of the public engagement consultation process, we will keep the engagement platform Have Your Say open until the end of January to allow a fulsome review of the financial plan in its entirety before bringing the plan to the board in February for final approval. During this afternoon's meeting, we will cover the topics listed on the slide before you. We will be referencing the presentation slides that were published with the agenda. Transparency and public engagement remain a top priority in the preparation of the budget. FBRD staff recently initiated a member municipality CFO forum and look forward to regular and ongoing collaboration on topics of mutual interest. As with prior years, the CFOs were invited to review and comment on the materials presented today. The discussion was productive, and while there were a few questions, no concerns were raised. Fiscal responsibility remains at the forefront of the budget direction. We recognize the challenging economic times and remain focused on gaining efficiencies, seeking external funding, and prioritizing required spending over new initiatives. This financial plan marks the second year under our new asset management program. Investments in our infrastructure are required now in order to responsibly manage assets and the related services in order to provide predictable future levels of taxation. We continue to pay close attention to budgets with low levels of savings as our objective is to avoid those dramatic spikes in taxation when the infrastructure investments are required. In order to ensure alignment on priorities, an electoral area prioritization session was held in September. And throughout the presentation materials, new initiatives have been identified as being either required or discretionary. A financial plan is a point in time. We do our best to effectively predict the FBRD's position. New legislation ultimately brings about new requirements which have yet to be fully understood. Workforce recruitment and retention remains a risk that can have notable impacts in our work plan. We note that inflation varies amongst sectors and remains a risk. These rates that are shown on the slide today are from last summer when the budget process kicked off. Risks. For budgets that include proposals for new initiatives, those initiatives have been identified as either required or discretionary. Discretionary projects will include a risk level. This is the risk level of not proceeding with the recommended project. This slide is a summary of the many steps that are involved in preparing the budgets, the behind-the-scenes work, if you will. We need to ensure the books are up to date and ensure adequate training and communication on key milestones in order to execute the preparation and compilation of one hundred and fourteen unique budgets. In September and October, we start packaging the budgets together, preparing for the elected official review process. And the financial plan timelines are highlighted on this slide, starting in November. The timeline on this slide doesn't consider the internal preparation that begins in the summer months that we presented on the previous slide. The financial planning process is a phased approach. We have stage gates on certain budget groupings in order to be prepared to move to the next stage. Each stage is iterative and allows for the incorporation of feedback. In November, we executed and held preview meetings with the materials with the ESK Committee of the Whole. In December, we proposed and finalized the seventy-two budgets with the electoral area directors. We reviewed community works funds plans with the electoral area directors. And in January, we updated our financial records with latest assessment information and preparation of the parcel tax rolls for the taxation process. This includes detailed analysis on changes in parcel counts for each respective service area. And with the latest assessment information, we call that the, or BCSessment calls that the completed roll, we review the taxation bylaws to ensure that we are compliant with the authority for maximum taxation. You'll likely recall some of those bylaws coming before you to make sure that we had the adequate authority to tax. Municipal CFO consultation on regional and subregional service areas was also held. And in February, following today's meeting, we'll incorporate any feedback and then we'll continue on the remainder of January with public consultation. And the public consultation period will end on January thirty-first. And then we will prepare the financial plan report and bylaw for adoption at the February board meeting. By legislation, the financial plan needs to be adopted by March thirty-first. Public consultation started early for the two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-nine plan back in the early fall, late summer, in an effort to improve the process and increase participation. Earlier in this presentation, I mentioned the iterative process of preparing the FBRD's financial plan. This year, we continued with our expanded public consultation to resemble this approach with a focus on transparency and education. Our Have Your Say public engagement platform was formally launched in September. A glossary of commonly used terms has been added, as well as a navigational tool for the budget materials. A survey was conducted, as well as ongoing opportunities for feedback. We have introduced a newsletter for registered participants, and we continue to seek opportunities to expand the reach of our consultation. The next few slides focus on BCSessment information. BCSessment has a responsibility for property assessments, which are the basis of taxation. We update our budget information with the latest property assessment values in order to provide effective tools for the decision-makers to understand the impacts of decisions on the average residential property owner in a given service area. Sixty-three percent of the FBRD's total tax base is residential properties. Last year, this figure was sixty-two percent. Sixty-eight percent of the electoral area base is residential. And last year, that was about seventy percent. The estimated taxation impacts throughout these presentation materials are all based on two thousand twenty-four assessment information. Unlike municipalities, which typically have one budget and tax base, nearly each one of these service areas has its own unique tax base. So the bottom-line tax impact to a property owner really depends on their specific property increases compared to other properties within that same service area. It's also important to note that the FBRD does not experience any windfalls when assessments increase. We just receive the dollars that we budget. The information is all based on two thousand twenty-four data. The presentation bases the estimated tax impacts for property owners on two thousand twenty-four assessments. However, we have just received two thousand twenty-five data, and that is used in the next few slides for overall global illustration purposes. But it indicates a general stabilization of assessments from two thousand twenty-four, and that's the same pattern throughout the province. No notable large swings. This is an illustrative excerpt from the Have Your Say engagement platform. The objective really is to, one, to add some useful graphics for property owners and members of the public, but it's to differentiate the roles and responsibilities of various organizations. So the FBRD determines the cost of delivering each of its services. BCSessment assesses the values of the properties. And then for electoral area properties, the province determines that tax rate required in order for the FBRD to obtain its approved budgeted tax dollars. This slide illustrates a two thousand twenty-one property tax notice for a sample property in electoral area A. It is important to show that nearly forty-six, of the nearly forty-six hundred dollars paid in property taxes, less than half, about nineteen hundred, comes to the FBRD. Funding for other agencies makes up twenty-seven hundred. I can't always do two things at once. Okay, the FBRD financial planning process requires our board to approve the budgeted dollars, as I've mentioned earlier, required to maintain and operate its services. As you know, the board is not approving tax rates. So when the FBRD requisitions the provincial rural taxation branch or issues those requisitions to member municipalities, it is for the dollars we require. The FBRD financial planning process requires our board to approve the budgeted dollars required to maintain and operate its services. We provide estimated taxation impacts to inform decision-makers on the estimated impacts for property owners. When considering a specific property's expected taxes, what is most important is how the property's assessed value changes in relation to other properties within the specific service area or tax base. If a property's value increased less than the other properties in that tax base, taxes will likely decrease. Conversely, if a property experiences increases greater than the other properties in that tax base, taxes will increase more than the others. So this is the latest and greatest information that we have from BCSessment. So the assessment bases, you'll see, between two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five are relatively comparable. Minor increases to residential class and a slight decrease in light industry, we see that in two thousand twenty-five. And this is really consistent with the rest of the province, generally a stabilization of property values from two thousand twenty-four. This slide illustrates the net taxable converted assessment base, so just that grand total for each electoral area and member municipality. While there are nine property classes, we have shown these all within four of the larger categories. Business and other also includes some of those other property classes that make up a marginal amount of the assessment base. That includes recreational properties, farm class, major industry, and supportive housing. This slide compares the average residential property assessment between two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-four. In all electoral areas and member municipalities, the average residential assessment has increased, with the exception of Kent, which remains approximately the same. A number of areas are at approximately two percent increase. And at the other end of the scale, electoral area A, the average residential property increased about thirteen percent, from one hundred and ninety-seven thousand to two hundred and twenty-four thousand. Earlier in the presentation, I mentioned service areas with low reserves. Reserves are funds set aside for capital requirements, for example, asset replacement, and in some cases, major maintenance.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just picked up on my body language here.
Director Horn has a question.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions before we get into the next section here. Two questions. The first is, and we're about to go into the conversation about at risk, and I just wanted a little bit more definition of what that meant. What were the criteria? From the earlier slide, I think number six, it says at risk of not proceeding. Is the risk that those projects won't proceed, or does it countenance the impact of not proceeding?
Thank you for your question through the chair. There's actually two different categories of risks within this presentation. One is this section right here, FBRD assets and budget at risk. And those are really budgets that we're watching. We're watching, and we started this a few years back, you may recall, and they were budgets that had little to no reserves. So major assets, water systems with two thousand dollars in their reserves. So we started a categorization of monitoring those assets. And they're largely financial, but they're based on the professional opinion of our colleagues. So in most cases, our engineering staff. So we also factored in, aside from pure financials, how much we have in reserve and what are the costs associated with major repair and/or replacement of those assets. We looked at the age. We looked at the condition of the asset. And we had some early works done on the early evaluation of replacements so we could really look at that time period. And of course, the greater risk is when the assets are quite past their useful life or nearing their end of their useful life. So we would rank those at higher risk if the financials were lower. So somewhat subjective, but with a number of criteria, not necessarily all documented. So it's in our collective professional opinions how we've come up with that. We also looked at the mathematics. What would it be? What are the average property assessments in that service area? So what's the tax bill for taxpayers? And if one of those unlikely events where a major repair or replacement is needed in advance of the schedule, how much would that cost? Would we need to do emergency borrowing, or what would the impact be on the tax bill? So we looked at all that for this section. And for the asset, the new risk categories that we talked about this year, those were from our colleagues around the room, the business managers, the business owners. Yeah. And those are the risks of not proceeding with their proposed projects.
So downstream, in some case literally, downstream impacts, lost opportunity, downstream costs elsewhere?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. My second question is, do we have, and I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to answer this, ask this question until earlier today. Do we have an overarching new construction revenue number for the entire region? I know at the municipal level, we normally get that. We were a bit surprised by our January roll from what we projected, in a good way this time. Do we know how much new construction revenue we've derived across the region? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Director Horn, for the question through the chair. Thank you for the question. We don't have that information from BCSessment. I will note that our property assessments are a little bit different, and our taxation is quite different than the municipalities. We don't have the year-over-year, the assessment to compare to last year to know where the new construction comes in. It's just the way the data comes in to us. However, I would just caution, too much reliance on that for the FBRD budgets because what we budget is exactly what we get. So the new construction, my experience from years back in a municipality, not a member municipality, but in other municipalities, non-construction is really important for the municipalities because of the timing when the tax rate's set. They could experience a windfall, depending on how those numbers are. Or there could be a reliance on that in the new construction, not necessarily the case here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions while we're taking a pause? Oh, we're good. All right. Let's continue.
Thank you. So this section is for those budgets that are at greater financial risk and risks that are greater than inflation.
The FBRD strives to maintain its assets in good condition and ensure that there is adequate funding available for scheduled, as well as unplanned maintenance, repair, and replacement. Should a service area have a need greater than the budget in a particular year, there would be a few steps taken. Depending on the urgency, a board budget amendment would come forward, typically for items greater than ten thousand dollars, to authorize a spending. And then if the work is absolutely required and there is no budget available, the budget will end the year in a deficit. By legislation, we are not permitted to carry a deficit, so we would need to increase taxation in the immediately following year to recover all of the deficit. As you can imagine, this could be quite dire for some taxpayers. We are seeking to find that right level of funding to avoid these potentially devastating financial shockwaves by having slow and predictable tax increases. We have completed some early works on estimated asset replacement valuation and the level of funds that should be contributed on an annual basis in order to achieve a reasonable financial position for these service areas. A number of factors are considered in developing the recommendations for reserve contributions or savings, somewhat like a condominium's contingency fund. In November two thousand twenty-three, the board adopted the asset management policy. This year marks the second financial plan under the asset management program for the FBRD. This slide includes two completed goals and two more on the horizon within our asset management program. In addition, the asset management policy requires the development and implementation of an asset management strategy. This will come forward to the board in the first part of two thousand twenty-five, as we are just finalizing that. We are also looking forward to the investment and implementation of an asset management system to support these broad regional needs, and the development of an RFP is underway. This year also includes a second year of accounting for asset retirement obligations under a new accounting standard. All to say that we have a lot of work underway with regards to our asset management program and managing our assets at risk. The next two slides illustrate service areas that have been identified as assets at risk. And generally, we have the support of the electoral area directors for replacement reserve contributions that are in line with expectations, requirements in the future. And we are continuing to move the dial towards minimizing the risk. I am pleased to share that we have removed two assets at risk. Firstly, the North Bend Sewer System, Budget four-four-three, was previously identified as an asset at risk. Electoral Area A removed this from a budget at risk. This was within Electoral Area A, and we did remove this because we followed a comprehensive assessment in two thousand twenty-four, and work has been planned in the future years to address the aging infrastructure. We have also removed Brexford Creek Flood Protection, Budget four-oh-six, Electoral Area E. We've removed that from the listing. It was previously orange as well, or amber. And taxation was increased in two thousand twenty-two to restore savings following two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty's emergency events. So the first budget you'll see on this listing is a regional combined E-nine-one-one. This one has been identified as a budget at risk due to the recent need to begin taxation as a call-answer levy has been declining. Popcom Sewer, Budget four-four-seven, has been newly added this year. The contributions to the savings are not quite there yet in terms of the suggested contributions. And that's largely due to the number, the slow coming on of the new development. So that's impacting the service area and the number of properties. Yale Water is in Electoral Area B, and that was downgraded from a red to an orange. The reservoir refurbishment was completed. And so we are moving the dial on some of these assets at risk. On this slide, Morris Valley Sewer, Budget four-four-three, was downgraded from a red to an orange. The savings are being replenished, and the disposal field refurbishment has been undertaken. And you'll see North Cultis Sewer. We plan to remove this from the listing once the new wastewater treatment plant is in operation. Before I pass on the microphone to my colleague, Ms. Klein, are there any questions for me on any of the information I've presented?
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. Over to you, Ms. Klein.
Okay. Okay, so moving into our actual service area budgets. So in front of you, and the next two slides are similar to what you have seen in the past. So before we dive in, a little bit of it will be refreshing everyone back on our slide presentation, just because it's been a year. And it's been a while since you guys have seen this. So for our presentation today, we are talking about regional and subregional budgets. So the slide in front of you is the listing of regional budgets that have tax impacts. The service areas listed here are taxed to all areas, all electoral areas and municipalities. And on the slide, we show the two thousand twenty-four tax requisition compared to the two thousand twenty-five tax requisition and that increase or decrease for one of those service areas. The next slide on the screen is a little bit different. So again, listing the subregional budgets. However, these are not taxed to all areas. So these individual service areas are taxed based on our bylaws, and they differ in the participants for each of them. And so just as a reminder, if you are looking to find out which service areas your municipality or electoral area participates in, we have included financial summaries at the very back of the slide deck by area. And you can see all of the service areas that you are participating in. And again, the comparison from two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five. So for this budget presentation, as Kelly mentioned, we have updated how we have put it together. So in the past, we grouped them by regional and subregional and ran through based on inflation increases. For ESK and for this Cal presentation, we have updated to categorize them based on our actual financial plan bylaw and our financial statements. Attached to the agenda, you will find a navigation guide, and it groups each of the service areas by these categories as we go through them. The guide actually is formatted so that the black font is the regional services and subregional services. And anything grayed out has already been gone through ESK, and it's just for ESK. Okay, so before we get into the different categories, does anyone have any questions on the categorization or overall summaries? Director Horn?
Going back, if I could, Ms. Klein, to the regional budgets. Two items, one-oh-five and one-oh-six, they're not huge line items, but their increase is quite considerable, about thirty-five percent in line one-oh-five, and then one-oh-six, about thirty-one percent. I just wondered if you could give a little bit of detail as to what was behind those increases.
Sure. For one-oh-six, we'll go into that one in detail, and we can talk about those details in the next section. One-oh-five, the regional grant and aids. This is based on the approved grant and aid applications that were brought forward in two thousand twenty-four. Or yeah, in two thousand twenty-four. The two thousand twenty-four tax requisition is based on the applications that we received for that year, and we only received thirty-seven thousand dollars, whereas this year we received over the fifty thousand dollars. So we had to tax for that amount. But I can definitely dive into those. But I can definitely dive into those those slide decks as well.
I guess the question, not so much for staff, but for the board is, do we presume that we'll fund all of those applications? Or do we set a budget and say we fund the ones that are best from the crop? It's not a huge number of dollars and we usually do get value out of grants and aid. But that's a significant leap and 35% is is a lot of money to move in a particular category. So anyways, that's my comment.
Did you want to comment or no? Just?
Thank you through the chair. These were approved by the board. Was it back in November we brought forward the? So we had a a threshold of $50,000. We did not tax for $50,000 though in 2024. And that could be a direction that we take regardless of the level of applications we should. It could be a choice for the board going forward. Do we always just tax at the $50,000 level? So there's no increment, but it is kind of what it is in 2024. We did not tax for the $50,000.
Thank you, Director Klute.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question similar to Director Horn in our subregional budgets. There was two items that had gone up substantially, the 255 and I believe the Regional Parks East 700. I'm just curious if you can touch on what drove up those costs.
For sure. Those those are listed in our slide deck that we're going to go through in detail as well.
Thank you. Please continue.
Okay, so just a bit of navigation here. So each of the categories will have this navigation slide prior to us diving into those individual slide decks. And so for this service area is our general government navigation. We have four service areas listed. And so for our top one, regional administration, we will be going into this one in detail. This is a regional budget, so it's taxed to all electoral areas and municipalities. This service provides the administrative expenses for the regional board and CIO's office. Next in the list, we have fiscal services to municipalities. This is an administration budget. There's no tax impact for this one. And we have included a slide for completeness of the financial plan. The the purpose of this service is for debt issuing to the municipalities. Next is our regional grant and aids. This is for those grant and aids that we have a policy up to $50,000. As Kelly mentioned, it's come forward through the board in fall of 2024. And in the slide deck, we've included those applications that were approved previously. And finally, on the list, we have our Indigenous Relations budget. And this service is for building relationships with Indigenous communities and continuing to foster and ensure the actions of our strategic plan are continuing to be advanced. So before going into our two budgets of regional administration and Indigenous relations, just looking to find out if there is other ones that would like to be separated, we can go into more than just the two.
Looks like we're good with the two.
Okay, so starting with our regional administration budget. So the
Excuse me, we do have one question. Director Gibson?
Thank you, Chair. The budget for Indigenous relations, what does that pay you for? Like, just summarize, like, is it writing reports or meetings? That's a fair amount of money. What it what is it actually paid for? Thank you.
Yeah, well, we'll jump into that one in the next slide, if that's okay. Okay, so for regional administration, this service is for ongoing initiatives. Sorry, the ongoing initiatives for this one are for the regional administration and regional board. You'll note that there is a decrease in tax requisition for this one. We just wanted to point out that in the July 2024 approach memo, we brought forward some changes that had been made for the regional administration budget. And so just to summarize those, we have moved the asset management software costs, ongoing costs out of this budget and they've now moved to IT. And the IT is part of our operational support budgets. And it's allocated to all of our services through an allocation method. But it is no longer directly tied to the regional administration budget as well as for our cascade program. And then the grants for the community forests have also been moved out of this budget. So looking at the financials, just to pause on here because, again, we haven't seen this for for a year. And so I just want to go through the navigation of the screen. And so each slide deck will have these financial slides. The very top, if there's taxation, will be the tax revenue line. Our five-year plan is from 2025 to 2029. And on the side here is our savings accounts. So sometimes there's multiple. Some could be reserves, which is earmarked based on a bylaw for typically capital use. And surplus is operating surplus. And we've named it a savings just to just to make it a little bit easier for taxpayers to understand the difference. So here is our revenue line. We are for this budget, we're bringing in some savings for 2026 and 2028. And on the bottom is our expenses. And so you'll see the salaries, benefits and operational support line items, the rest of the costs of the service area. And again, there's a transfer to the savings account down here. So for this this service area, you can see that there's a decrease in that tax requisition based on moving those three items out of the service area.
Director Siemens?
Thank you. I just appreciate the explanation and the and those transfers. I think it just I remember when these issues came up and I just appreciate the the attention. And I think it's just a more fair, equitable way to to divvy up. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, we have another question? Director Re.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question on the transfer from savings and I I think you said it, but I just need clarity. Those are transfers that are pre-planned to go to capital expenditures and not just to cover, you know, a shortfall in in the budget.
Thank you for the question through the chair. They it depends. Yes, they are pre-planned. Some could be for capital use and some for operating costs. This one specifically in that 26 to 28-year frame, those are for strategic planning costs.
Great. Anyone else before we move on? Please continue.
Okay. I'm jumping over to Indigenous relations. Okay. Okay, so the service area purpose again is to build those relationships with Indigenous communities. Key highlights of this plan are two projects. So we have the UBCM Community to Community Program and as well as updating our Cedar Network mapping functionality. We do have our team of staff here that can expand on anything as well. But I'll run through some ongoing initiatives. So the ongoing initiatives are to advance the strategic plan. There was some Indigenous Relations actions outlined as well as representing the FUD or representing other treaty tables. Some challenges and risks for this budget is are the landscape, change of case law, legislation and best practices. And considering the impact to the provinces, Bill 41. And before I dive into the details in this one, I just want to pause on these proposed slides. So Kelly had mentioned that we've updated the proposed project slide that we had last year. This year, we've split it into mandatory or discretionary projects. And so for this service area, we'll have both. We'll have a mandatory section, which you can see up here and a discretionary section and an explanation on why those were chosen. So for this this service area, the mandatory project is that Community to Community Program because it has been board-supported in the past. This one is grant-funded at a cost of $20,000. The discretionary projects for the service area are the Cedar Network mapping upgrade as well as the Indigenous Culture Safety and Humility Training. The humility and cultural safety training is grant-funded for a cost of $40,000. And the Cedar Network mapping upgrade is $15,000 using savings. Okay, so we have the newly proposed projects and we also have our five-year horizon. So because we do a five-year plan, we do want to make sure we lay out what that five-year plan looks like. And so on this list, you'll see those three projects from the proposed projects, the 20,000, 40,000 and 15,000 there as well as the Indigenous Relations Framework. And so this is to develop and propose the framework and it is an internal cost. And finally, we have our financial statements. And so same structure. In 2024, we did use some savings to soften that taxation. In 2025, there's only $15,000 being used, so there is a an increase in 2025.
Director Dixon?
Thank you, and thank you for all this information. Much appreciated. I'm just trying to wrap my head around this a little bit. So I'm seeing a I get that it's relatively small budget, but it's a large increase or it seems to be. If if it could you go back in slides? So it's when it's got the projects, the five-year horizon. So are we taxing for those right now or all of them? Or are are they only going, some of them only going ahead if there's grant funding?
There is none of these projects, well, I shouldn't say none of them. The so the internal costs, those are built into the operating cost. So those would technically be taxation. But the projects listed there, those three projects with dollar values, there's grant funding or use using savings for it.
Okay, so if I'm looking at, it looks like an increase in, is it an increase in taxation of $28,000 on that slide? And that is just for the internal costs?
There's a there's a few things going on. So there is a decrease in the use of surplus to soften the taxation compared to last year. And then there's operating cost increasing. So this salaries, benefits and operating cost increase here. So there's there's two things increasing taxation.
Okay, thank you.
Director Horn?
Just the slide that's up is very helpful for my first question, consulting and legal. I just kind of trying to get clarity on under what budget our general legal expenses might apply and where might we draw from legal budgets affiliated with this work? If somebody can help me to understand how we differentiate.
Go. Okay, thank you for the question. So the consulting and legal will include any legal specific to this service area or the services that are being worked on here rather than the general legal.
Yeah, that's sort of the the answer I kind of obviously incumbent in in the words. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is something perhaps in my second question might illustrate this. The C2C forum that Chawato, I recognize we approved it here a couple of months ago. That's obviously happening in the area near the District of Hope and electoral area surrounding. It's interesting to me that that's a regional budget item and and I don't know whether or not we have a framework that describes how that might look at other parts of the region for similar C2C tables. I know that Harrison and Kent have a different one that you guys sit at Let's Mot. So I'm I'm just kind of trying to understand why this is a regional budget item and how other member communities would access it. And maybe it's a question for to be tabled and brought back another time. Just curious about how how it works in terms of the work we're doing at municipal level and whether or not we could be supported through similar shared funding. And Madam Chair, I realize that's a big question. I'm quite happy to have that answer another time and offline.
Ms. Kineman wants to answer. Through the chair to Director Horn and I'll just lean on my colleague David Urban to speak to it. I think recognizing that regional Indigenous relations is really challenging with 31 First Nations. And we are developing that framework so that we can have a go-forward approach. I think over time, you've seen us do these C2Cs at subregional levels and they they shift throughout the region. Envisioning a C2C with 31 First Nations isn't likely to yield 31 participants. But I'll just look to David. Maybe he wants to expand on that a little bit more.
Thank you through the chair. Jennifer said it well. What we see is the C2Cs do move around. And it may be right now a little heavy in the eastern area of the region. Other communities have reached out with interest in having a CTC in the western area such as Lakoma.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess what I would say is it's really important just to sort of put out to the group, I certainly 100% understand that rationale. And I think in their policy and our approach to things, we should be thinking about, and I'm using air quotes, the business casing of this as a opportunity to expand these efforts or to demonstrate what's possible and to reach out to member communities, including municipalities and share that information proactively. Because I don't know that, for example, the administration of my city understands completely that this may be a possibility that we could work with some of the same resourcing. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Siemens?
Thank you. So I'm just wondering on the the cultural safety and cultural humility training, is there an opportunity for, like I know for the for the city of Abbotsford, seven of our nine council members are here. Is there is there a possibility to expand, to put that out to member municipalities to have all of their council attend these? Because otherwise, we're we're kind of overlapping. I think there might be some value in that and and also for maybe some of our senior leadership team.
Through the chair to Director Siemens, I am so glad that you asked that question because just 45 minutes ago, Mr. Urban and I were speaking on this very subject. So I'll just let him describe what's envisioned for the future.
Thank you through the chair to Director Siemens. This is a grant fund that we applied for last year as well. And we just found out we're successful for this year. And it's related to, like it says here, cultural safety and humility training. There's four components that we're speaking about. One is educating staff with a focus on emergency management. And through that, we're thinking of tours through the Bad Rock program that's offered through the Scola Research Resource Management Center. Coupled with that, we'd like to to further work with the board here. It's quite important for training and awareness. And we didn't have that opportunity last year, but we'd like to do some more this year. As well, we're doing further work and the next component, just a moment here. Well, I spent a great thought. Is sorry.
Ms. German, I think that some of the other activities that we've been contemplating revolve around chance fine procedures and some other types of activities and opportunities that the board may want to participate in. We had made available an opportunity for the board to do some online training. I know some of you were able to do that over the last number of months. But we are taking this time to consider what might be most meaningful, not just for board members, but also for our staff. We've had perhaps a lot of opportunities presented to us in the past, whether through this organization or through conferences that we attend. Uh, whether through this organization or through conferences that we attend and what have you. So just looking for some of, of those uh areas what we maybe haven't touched on before, uh, and happy to accept any suggestions as well.
Yeah. Please continue.
Okay, so this is the end of the general government section. And so each category, we have included a resolution for the budgets that we're talking about in that category. Um, and so this is our first resolution uh for the regional admin fiscal services to municipalities, regional grant and aids and Indigenous relations.
Do we have a motion? Moved by Director Siemens, do we have a second or Director Shahal? No comments or questions, all right, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion's carried.
Okay, so moving on to our next section, our next section is the protective services listing here. So for this section, we have building inspection services. Um, this building inspection services was also presented at the ESK um Committee of the Whole. Um, however, there's a Harrison Hot Springs portion. And so we've kept it in the slide deck uh for completeness. This is considered a subregional budget and so um we've been talking internally a bit for this one. And because we've always done this one at ESK in the past, that's how we've moved forward with it this year. But um next year, we'll bring this one in full to the Regional Cal. For the listing on the screen, we have subregional search and rescue as well. This service is to fund the search and rescue programs through grant provisions. Um, that it is split by municipality and EA based on the actual search and rescue programs and our bylaw. Um, so not all funding is the same for this one. Um, for example, we fund the Chilliwack Search and Rescue. Um, but the participants of that taxation are the City of Chilliwack, Area D, Area E and Area H. So every search and rescue has a different tax base within this service area. Combined E911, this service area is that budget at risk that Kelly discussed previously. Um, this service is for the initial 911 call handling. We will be discussing this budget today in detail, um, as it is a budget and risk. We also have regional fire dispatch. The fire dispatch budget is for the actual dispatch cost for fires specifically. Um, this budget is focused on network improvements and preparing for next gen 911. And finally, we have the municipal animal control budget. Um, this is for most of the municipalities with the exception of Hope. And we will be going through this one in detail today. So before we go into the two budgets, the 911 and animal control. Um, just looking to find out if there's other ones that the committee would like to go through as well.
Thank you, uh, Madam, Madam Chair, um, can, could we see uh budget 240 quickly as well, please?
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, also just a quick question on budget 204, if the um there was two different, were, were you going to discuss 204? Did I miss that?
We weren't going to, but I can definitely talk about it.
Um, just there was two different scenarios there and I just wanted to see if we could break out those different scenarios for sure. Thank you.
I can just jump back to that, um, before we dive into the others. So we have presented um two scenarios. The expense side of both scenarios are the exact same. The difference is only that we are using surplus to soften taxation for the uh scenario that was moved forward from ESK. And so that's option one, and that's the one that's included in um, in the summaries. Option two. As you can see, the only difference is this line item here, not using, not using as much surplus to soften taxation.
If I may, um, is there, could you identify what the risk is to using that surplus to soften taxation? Um, what the risk is over time for that, because it does feel like there's a pretty good risk associated with that and I'm not sure that, that the um benefit outweighs the risk.
Thank you for the question through the chair. Um, yes, so there is a risk with using surplus to soften. And it's a bit of an art when we um put it forward. And so what can happen is if you use up all of your surplus in the middle of your financial plan, your taxation might jump. And so what we have to um consider when using it is at the end of the five year plan or forward, depending how long you are using surplus. Just to make sure that there's enough surplus to cover any unexpected um costs in a future year. And so when you look at this softening, the art is really you have to decrease it slowly. And so we're ending here just using $74,000, ending with a million dollars, which could cover almost a year of um a full budget expense. And so it's just, it's working that, that risk of the potential funding loss, can it be covered?
Yeah, you're good? Okay, Director Dickey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, and in um uh, to speak to this issue, uh, the transfer from saving is only about a $20,000 difference on the surplus, 1.8 million. Not something that I'm going to lose a lot of sleep over. That is unless I'm reading this incorrectly.
Through the chair, um, to Director Dickey, um, no. And, and this is why we put forward this option, given the, the large balance in the savings account. We felt we ought to present a second scenario which didn't have as large of a tax increase. Just looking at the overall, overall impact of all of the budgets and knowing that it was a large surplus. We felt that we could, um, as, as Beth said, use the art and, and slowly draw down the reliance on the surplus funds. Um, my colleague here, Graham Danilus, um, has outlined that there is a slight risk because we don't necessarily know the building permit um values precisely. We don't know exactly what's going to happen each year. Um, but I, I feel that we were still confident in going forward with this recommendation.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so moving forward to our search and rescue budget. And so for this service, there are four ser- search and rescue detachments that we are funding. The Chilliwack Search and Rescue, Kent Harrison, Search and Rescue, Hope and Mission Search and Rescue. Um, this plan is in line with the 2024 financial plan. Um, so the increases are based on, I believe, 3.5 for each of the grant funds. And so on the slide, you can see the different levels of grants in the expense side um listed separately. And as I said, each tax base for each of those lines is different.
Director Lam?
So just focusing on um Chilliwack SAR, what would the service area participants be for Chilliwack SAR? Is that the area DE and H in Chilliwack?
Yeah, DEH and Chilliwack.
DEH and Chilliwack. Okay, and you have that one broken down by how much each participant pays in that?
Yeah, so the, the bylaw is based on a percent share, so I can give you that. Otherwise, the dollar values in the financial summaries at the back, yeah.
So majority of that work, I guess, that happens and those is not happening in the city of Chilliwack proper. It's happening out in the provincial areas or it's happening in some of the other areas, but I'm just, yeah, just curious where uh how that's uh, how it's uh shared amongst the participants.
Sure, I can expand on the allocation. Um, so for so for the percent share, Chi- City of Chilliwack is 47.4%. Um, Area E, 1.2%. Area H is 2.8% and Area D is 1.6%. Sorry.
Seems like we're missing like 50%.
Sorry. Let's try this again, okay? Okay. Chilliwack is 86.5 of Chilliwack Search and Rescue. Area D, 3.9%, Area E, 2.8% and Area H, 6.8%.
Director Horn?
Yes, we go back on the, thank you. Um, just looking at Mission, and this doesn't impact 2024, 2024 most likely. But I know that Mission's Search and Rescue is going to move to a new facility in the next couple of years. There'll be capital expenses associated with that. And there may be strategic intentions to expand Search and Rescue. I just wondered whether or not we had um, what the consultation process was around this number. It only moves by about a thousand dollars in the next five years each year. So um, i- i- it's, I'll put my hand up when we get to the item here. But I, I suspect that in 25 or 26, they'll need to look at that number um differently.
Sure, I'll, I'll ask my colleague Kelly to speak to that one.
Um, thank you, um, through the chair to Director Horn, um, a, a couple of things. Um, w- we had, uh, we had met with uh the City of Mission and um we um i- i- if there are expansions coming forward, we would definitely welcome a business case on that element. Um, we are also happy to, um, a- as Beth has outlined, we've based the increases to each search and rescue um on last year's financial plan, 3.5%. I think it's been a steady, steady increase, um, consistent year over year. But we're happy to present different options in the future for increasing the funding, should the board desire.
I, it, it's an area where I didn't look specifically, I just was struck by how little they increased each year and knowing what's happening there. I'll just ask that you make a marginal note to consult on this specific item. As moving forward, I suspect there's going to be a lot of capital asks in any of the people who are going to be housing their new building. Um, so that's just for the future, thank you.
Okay, I can just add to that one uh through the chair to Mayor Horn. Uh, the last, we had a conversation with the City of Mission that they had committed to come to us with that um detailed plan. So really the ball is in Mission's court at this time.
Director Dreeson?
Thank you, um, just wondering if I could get a clarification on something. Um, this area, oh, sorry, I'm looking actually at service area 204 now, which I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going back a little bit. But to the, that was an electoral area um piece where we're grabbing, where we're using the surplus. The surplus comes from general, from member reserves, like general member reserves, is that correct? I'm just wondering, is it's not?
So just to clarify, so surplus can only be used in the service area that it was earned, so it only from 204?
Thank you, that's just what I was, was looking for.
Thank you, Director Dixon?
Uh, well, thank you, and so now that, now that you were uh rattling off the percentage, you were paying for uh search and rescue, I really am curious, um and you may not have an answer now, but why, I think it was Area H space 6.8% whereas Area D is 3.4% where if I look on that little map that has, you know, values of houses and stuff were, were similar, I think. So I'm not understanding, um, is it becau- is it based on population of the area or?
That's right. Water skiers following us.
Thanks, thank you for the question, we can look into it. I'm not exactly sure um the origin of the percentages, but they are within the bylaw. So they're, they're marked in the bylaw at that percentage.
So it could just be a historical thing or whatever, but okay, yeah, I would, um, I'm just a little bit curious how that, how that came to be and how it, how it is happening just. Um, yeah, I, I, okay, thank you for that, appreciate it.
Director Pranger?
Thank you, um. Are there other contributors to the Kent Harrison's um search and rescue other than Harrison and Kent?
Thank you for the question through the chair, um, the other contributor is Area C. So Harrison, Kent and Area C are the three.
Thank you, Director Dickey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just think on the issue of the SAR budgets, uh, if my memory serves me, uh, that was at the time when Clint Hames was mayor of Chilliwack. And uh, at the time, I remember thinking that if you look at it on a per capita basis, there really is no logic to those numbers. Because um Chilliwack, for instance, would have 50 times as many residents as Opcom, yet we pay a much bigger share. And I think um, I'll just like Columbia Valley is in the same, maybe even more gracious um. But if that were to come up in the future, that might be worthwhile. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Just gonna try and navigate back to our screen here. I can't see. I just need to go back to presentation screen. Sorry about that, okay. So moving on to the next service area, so our next service area to discuss is the combined E9 not, E, E911 service, this is a budget at risk. Um, so the purpose of this service is for the 911 call handling, the initial call, the initial 911 call handling. And so highlights this plan are preparation for next gen 911, um, agreement processes and funding. And the reason for it being as a budget at risk is the continued decline of the call answer levy through landlines. So because we have both 246 and 247, we just have a slide here to talk about the difference. Um, so the one we are talking about right now is combined 911. Um, the, this is a service provided by ECOM. Um, and it is funded by tax requisition and the call answer levy on landlines. Um, the 247 budget is the regional fire dispatch, this is for fire dispatch, including radio network. And it is um service provided by ECOM as well as the FBRD funded by tax requisition. So I just want to clarify the difference. For the 911 budget, um, the risk is the declining revenue from the call answer levy on landlines. As well as the increase in the ECOM um contract. The next gen 911 is still um work in progress, so the full cost of that is unknown. For the other considerations, um, of course, the call answer levy for cell phones being considered. The transition timelines for 911 and the increased operational cost anticipation due to the, the transition to next gen 911. So on the screen is the five year horizon for this service area. So you can see that it is a focus on that next gen 911. Um, just looking at the annual cost of that, the levy estimated around $50,000 each year. Um, and we've just included that ECOM increase of 122,000 for 2025. So looking at the financials again, um, we are using that, the transfer or the savings amount here, bringing it in to cover the costs. Um, the tax requisition amount of 500,000 is in line with the 2024 financial plan. So we're slowly increasing it um based on the actual call answer levy that we receive each year. We don't fully know what 2024 call answer levies are at this point. We still have some numbers coming in for year end, um, but it is a forecast based at a point in time.
Uh, Director Dickey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I believe I read that recently the Fraser Fort George Regional District has decided to take the 911 calls back in house. I'm just curious of what the logic might be behind that.
Uh, through the chair to Director Dickey, you're very up on the news. Um, I uh received that news release as well and contacted the CAO uh with Fraser Fort George, hoping to get some clarity. Um, my suspicion is, is that this could be a real opportunity for job creation in the north. Um, I would suggest that if that was something that this board was interested in looking at, there would be quite a lot of there would be quite a lot of work that would be needed in terms of, uh, analyzing, uh, the cost benefit around that. Uh, certainly, uh, starting something up like that would involve a lot of capital investment, uh, to meet the, the needs of, uh, current technology and current expectations and, um, requirements around dispatch, uh, and the next gen nine one one, uh, not to mention staffing. So, um, I, I hope to learn more from my colleagues in the North, uh, but I suspect that they were dissatisfied with the service they were receiving and came up with this plan.
So if I might, uh, so it appears that the argument isn't economy, but rather, uh, job creation argument?
Uh, through the chair to Director Dickey, I'm speculating at this point. As I mentioned, I did reach out to my colleague to try to get an understanding of what that business case looked like for them. Um, and when, what drove them to explore that? I, I would think it would be a rather large project to, um, make that assessment to establish a service such as that.
Good, thank you.
Director Siemens?
Uh, thank you, yeah, I thought I'd just maybe mention, um, we've had some ongoing challenges, um, with the service at ECOM nine one one. And, and I think those are well documented. So we are, um, as a member municipality, we are advocating for a governance review. And we feel that that is something that the provincial government should be doing. We don't feel that, uh, an internal review of governance is wise. So anything that we can do to, um, allow the provincial government to do the review, um, I think is, is wise and, and prudent. Um, the other challenge, um, just for our, um, electoral areas, just for your information, not only are we challenged on this budget, which I believe for us is about a twenty-five percent increase, but we also have the same challenges on our police budget. So we are getting a double whammy here. So just to sort of give you some perspective of, of the challenges that are with this, I suspect that our friends in the North are probably what drove it was the frustration with the service level. You may want to just reach out to our police department to understand. We did do a little bit of a pilot project and service levels did improve, but we are, um, I think this is still probably the most advantageous and cost-effective way. But I do feel that we could lend our voice collectively to, um, the province doing the governance review as opposed to an internal review. Thank you.
Director Dixon?
Uh, thank you. So I'm just looking at this one and our, this budget, uh, potentially will double for tax requisition in five years. Uh, or at least that's kind of the way I see it. Are, are there any opportunities for like seeking revenue or things like, so this, this, this is the one where we no longer get the landline, uh, uh, levy, or is, or is that the other one?
Correct, this is the one that the levy is decreasing every year.
Right, so that is why the requisition is going to need to go up. So where are we at with, I know that there had been lobbying to, um, UVCM, I think it was, and to the province around, you know, uh, with the levy on the cell phones like it was for years and years on landline and still is, just landlines are decreasing. Um, I'm just kind of wondering if there's anything or anywhere for revenue seeking, just, um, feels, uh, pretty, doubling pretty quickly.
Thank you, uh, to Director Dixon, um, through the chair. This is, um, a longstanding challenge, uh, with the decreasing landline. There has been a lot of collective work through UVCM to try and lobby to charge, uh, on cell phones. But to date, we don't have any, um, positive, uh, response on that item.
Now, if I can just further add, uh, through the chair to Director Dixon, I believe this topic is actually going to be at the EA forum in February. And so I would encourage you, uh, when you're attending that, that might be a really good opportunity to ask these questions about when, uh, we might see a levy added to mobile devices.
Thank you. Director Horn?
Just a reminder to the board that, uh, this has been resolved at the provincial level at UVCM, and I think it's being advocated for there as well. Um, I think they're finding the same frustrations as we are in Fraser Fort George and everybody else in between this.
Yes. Okay, so our last budget in this category is the animal control service. So this is for Abbisford, Chilliwack, Harrison, Kent, and Mission. The service area purpose is for animal control in those areas as well as, um, First Nations communities, and just a correction, that's for First Nations communities with two contracts. Um, so key highlights of this plan are the relocation of the care center, um, and, uh, significant increase in operating costs, including vet fees and postage. Um, as well as twenty twenty-five is the first year that we have uniform user fees for buying dog tags throughout the FBRD. So I believe this has been a ten-year process to get there, but we are there as of twenty twenty-five. Um, so ongoing initiatives for animal control are continuing to seek economical vet care for spay and neuter, public engagement, and increased licensing awareness. Budget risks and challenges, our current service provision, provision levels are reliant on the approval of this budget. Um, shelter capacity challenges, relocation costs, and method of funding are still to be determined, um, as well as continuing evaluation of the First Nation service interest. Director Horn?
I'll wait till after this slide if you'd like, I can realize we had one more.
Um, so we have, um, two slides for proposed projects. So for this slide on screen, these are the mandatory projects. Um, so the twenty twenty-five care center relocation, design, and management fees, they are currently being funded, um, from savings of a hundred and seventy-five thousand. They are previously committed, as well as a vehicle replacement in twenty twenty-five. Next on screen are the discretionary projects or initiatives. Um, so for, for this section, we have two. These are programs that we have done in past years, um, including twenty twenty-four. And so we have just left them on the screen just to show the risks of, um, not having these programs or the impacts. So the patroller educator, educator for six months, uh, around a cost of sixty thousand dollars through taxation. And, um, the impacts, this impacts the amount of licensed dogs and, um, off-leash compliance, public frustration. The after-hours emergency response is around eighty thousand dollars as well as, as well from taxation. Um, this is to support police, fire, and ambulance. And looking at the five-year horizon, we have that care center relocation. So as mentioned, um, the funding and costs are still to be determined, um, as well as a vehicle replacement in twenty twenty-seven. Okay, good, okay, Director Horn?
Yes, thank you. Uh, if I can get you to go back, Ms. Klein, two or three slides. Uh, no, sorry, there, there we go, perfect. Uh, remind me if you wouldn't mind before I make my point. The after-hours emergency response, uh, shows, uh, approximately eighty thousand dollars. Have we thought a little bit about normalizing, uh, the staffing of these, uh, of the officers and staff here, um, so that they are not just working a nine to five, uh, uh, I'll give a background, but I'll, I'll get to the, that after I hear the answer. Has there been any talk about looking at the model?
I can speak to that, uh, thank you. Uh, no, there has not been any, uh, discussion so far about changing this current model. These funds are, uh, fund not only the cost when they're called out, but also the on-call cost of, of somebody being available, making themselves available to be, uh, to respond.
Thank you. Uh, I'll certainly support the increase here, and I actually think, based on what I hear in my own community, and Ms. Barker and her team aptly help us to deal with a lot of this, there's a demand for actually probably more of what we see on the screen here right now. We, when it comes to our bylaw enforcement locally, are looking more and more at changing that model when our staff available to people. And there certainly seems to be a demand in animal control as well, and there seems to be a demand for people to be on the ground in our parks, uh, in evenings and weekends when they're most populated. And so, um, I actually anticipate that there'll be some interest in our community in increasing the amount of coverage, and that I think we should be working gradually towards that. Less the community become dissatisfied with the service and, and ask us to exit. And I think we would end up paying more individually if we did that. So I'll just leave that with staff to think about as maybe business between this budget and next year's. And maybe we need to sit down and take a look now that we're kind of past the conversation of the location and think about the model and reconciling it with community expectations. Thank you.
Director Lum?
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, can we go to the budget line items, sir? The, there we go. So there is a fairly substantial increase on the member tax requisition. And there's, I see then there's services to First Nations goes up, uh, fairly significantly in twenty twenty-six, just anticipating additional contracts like with, because these are just like, we're just contracting out, right, to, to provision the services?
Yes, that's correct. So, um, although we do currently supply animal control services to four First Nations, it is at a, um, we don't provide them with full services. Uh, we're more like their pound service when they, when they need us. And we, um, help to educate their community members and we work with their, their own enforcement. Um, and we step in if there is a particularly dangerous situation that we can assist with. But currently we have many First Nations, um, many who really want to come onboard this service. And so once we can address the capacity issue, uh, then I think that we will have, uh, many funders, any extra funders who, um, uh, will want to contribute to the service.
And then, um, can you get an idea of how, if at all, this service interacts with dangerous dogs stuff? Is there?
Yeah, so this service, uh, overall or sorry, or specifically for the First Nations?
No, so da- because is dangerous dogs a separate service area?
No, so, uh, the regional animal control, uh, bylaw encompasses everything. It's really the, the full service, uh, which includes dangerous dogs. Um, you may be thinking of the electoral area bylaw.
That's right.
It focuses just on dangerous dogs.
That's the one I'm thinking of. So, but I mean, they don't, that, that dangerous dog bylaw, um, it would in, it has an enforcement provision to it. They don't have their own pound for dangerous dogs. They would use this animal control, our animal control facilities here, right?
Yes, it's the same animal control facility that houses dogs from, from First Nations, from the bylaw participants here and within the electoral areas that are participants.
And is that, is there a, uh, I'm just looking for that revenue cost recovery on that. Is that, is that in the revenue, is there a revenue line item for that?
Although it may be rolled up here, yeah, yes, there is a transfer from that electoral area services budget into this regional budget. So yes, they contribute to, to these services as well.
Okay, but it's just not split out on here, so we don't have an idea of exactly what that is.
We can, we're just looking at that.
Yeah. That's okay, I'm just, I'm curious about that. And then the, the jump from the twelve thousand dollars in services provided for stations to the two twenty-five anticipated in twenty twenty-six, that's, doesn't represent signed contract service agreements with service, with First Nations. That's an estimate, our best case, best estimate of based on requests from First Nations who want to join this, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And just to come back to that recovery from the dangerous dogs, it's, it's just over a hundred thousand each year, around a hundred to a hundred and ten.
And that includes, uh, some First Nations and all the electoral area?
That's just the electoral area.
Just electoral, okay.
Director Clu?
Thank you, um, just a question, I, I did hear in the presentation that, um, some, if not all, First Nations have their own enforcement, and we respond if it's a dangerous dog scenario. Am I incorrect in that, or how, how does that look?
For, all First Nations do not have their own abilities to, to, most of them don't have the ability to regulate dangerous dogs yet. Some of them are coming into land code, I believe. And through that, they're able to develop their own, uh, bylaw, uh, which is applicable on their lands. Our bylaw doesn't, um, extend onto their lands. And, um, they need assistance, and they are asking for assistance in developing that capacity for dangerous dog control enforcement. It is, it is a unique skill, and, um, so they are wanting to build that. Uh, but that is typically where we step in and assist, um, in those situations. But we will also impound dogs, uh, if their council, um, uh, if according to their bylaw, they are legally allowed to do so, then we can help them to impound dogs. And those residents pay impound fees as others do when they come pick up their dogs.
Okay, thank you. And, and further to that, is the only member municipality not in this service area Hope? And I'm just curious how they do their, uh, animal control at the moment. And we, we cover the cost of having the matter.
Yes, Hope is the only municipality not part of this program.
They're in Director Smith's backyard if they catch dogs.
Director Smith? You're on the hot seat.
We, we've been like this for quite a while, and, uh, for many, many years from that. I don't think previous councils or anything has varied from that. So I think they continue that way, and we actually are looking at a new, uh, uh, you know, we go for tender all the time with the person there, we seem to be happy where we're going, so I don't think change will be happening.
Thank you. Okay, please continue. Okay, so we have, um, ended the protective services section, um, and we have a resolution on the board, or on the slide. Move by Director Horn, seconded by Director Adama. No comments or questions, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, so our next section is the transportation services section. So we have four services in the transportation services. Um, we have our air park, uh, which is the Hope and, uh, Hope Air Park and the emergency landing strip in Boston Bar. We have three transit budgets on the screen there. So we have our area D, Chilliwack, Kent, and Harrison. We have our Fraser Valley Express, and we have the Hope Transit Line. And so we will be going through the three transit budgets today, um, unless there is a request to go through the air park as well. Okay, so starting our transit services, we have a slide, um, just an overview slide of the three with similar, um, themes to talk about first. So for the transit service, um, the three transit services, the transit funding is BC Transit funds forty-six, almost forty-seven percent of the conventional transit system, and the local government funds fifty-three percent of the conventional transit. Local governments use revenue collected, um, to reduce the property tax share of costs. So this could be through the fare box on the actual, um, on the, on the transit lines or, um, EMO pass sales. Local governments are invoiced on actual cost basis, so minus the operation cost. Um, so the fuel, wages, and maintenance, um, are within those operating costs, and they can fluctuate. Budget risks and challenges, there is continued use of survey or surplus, um, savings to soften taxation. Um, some of these will end within the five-year financial plan. There is challenge, or there is consideration of the expansion costs where demand warrants, and, um, not approving the budget will impact the ability to provide transit service to meet rising customer demand. So starting with the transit line for area D, Chilliwack, Kent, and Harrison. So the key highlights of this plan, um, there is a seventeen percent requisition increase in twenty twenty-five and sixty- So the key highlights of this plan, um there is a seventeen percent requisition increase in twenty twenty five and sixteen percent in twenty twenty six. This service uses surplus to soften taxation. Uh, and the annual operating agreement between the years of twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five have increased thirty percent. Um, they have a different fiscal year than us, so we are showing the, the April end there. Ongoing initiatives for this specific transit line um are exploring connections between Agassi and Mission. And ongoing assessment of ridership and revenue growth. So budget risks and challenges for this service area are the fuel and operating cost increases. Um, this is the first full year under a new collective agreement. The new transit facility in Chilowack to support ongoing operations and future expansions are considered in this financial plan. Um, the costs realized once facility operational in twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty eight. And finally, the UMO electronic fare technology costs. Um, so in October of twenty twenty four, we've fully integrated into the UMO um fare technology. Other considerations are the transit facility and the utilization of surplus. So looking at um this surplus over here, you can see we are using it up. Um, and this is where that BC Transit costs would fall under in this consulting and contract services.
Director Reed.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so I think it's my theme today, but there's the transfer from surplus to soften taxation. Um, and really depleting that savings surplus. Again, it just feels like this is a bit of a um situation where we don't know what's going to happen with uh revenues from transit revenue and where things could go if we need to increase services. Is that uh where we see the best use of those savings um to happen? And I, I know it's a substantial amount, um seventy one thousand to three hundred and thirty seven in member taxation. But it just feels like we're depleting something that looks a little scary by twenty twenty five.
Thank you. Um, through the chair to Director Reed. Um, your point is, is accurate. It's um right now, the proposed tax increase is sixteen point five percent. So recognizing that we had such a large tax increase, this is why the proposal came forward to draw down the reliance upon surplus. We, we are very open to the, the board um in the committee uh making a, a motion to have an amendment to not, not rely so much on surplus, um noting though we are at a sixteen point five percent tax increase.
Director Horn.
Um, uh generally speaking, I would take the perspective of Director Reed. Uh, however, in this case, I think it's a significant increase, worthwhile increase. And the only other option in my view would be to increase fares, which will have a, a, a contrary effect to ridership. So um, these are bold initiatives. I know that uh Director Pranger has been working on the uh North Fraser Lake for some time. And I just think the value is there and I think this softens the blow for people that way. I would add, I'm not sure how the surplus might otherwise be used in this case. I'm not sure if there's a high risk to it. Uh, because if there is some challenge along the way, it's probably accommodated through operational change. Um, so I, I will support what staff have put forward here. I think it is probably the easiest way to bring in some growth.
Director Lum.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. I can think of a good way to use some of that surplus. Um, there's uh large capital costs um on the transit facility and the expansion of the transit facility that's going to be in Chilowack. I think BC Transit purchased uh some property and um there'll be costs associated with that, I think incorporated in the leaseback of that facility to all the participants. And I don't know if that's envisioned in um some of the overhead contract services, like they wrap, they roll that into the overhead um services, I believe, in the contract from, from DC Transit. Is that correct?
Uh, through the chair. Um, yes, I believe the, certainly the um, the contract is incorporated into this. I've made some rough estimates of what the potential costs of the transit facility would be. But right now, until the um facility management plan is completed, we really won't have a full understanding of what the cost is going to be. Um, it will be on a, my understanding, on the, the lease fee will be on a, a service hour basis. So the services with the largest hours will certainly um pick up more of the cost um in, in absolute terms. But everyone would be paying the same in terms of the service hour basis. But right now, um I'd love to know, like, I hate the unknowns. So I really would love to know, you know, what these costs are going to be and how much um opportunity there is for, for federal funding to offset some of these costs. So it's, there's this unknown, which is, is always a, a challenge with, with these budgets.
And did they not make it more eligible for gas tax, um, uh, for transit facilities in the gas tax side of the house too or something? There was some um relaxation of grants. I wasn't sure what it was that made transit facilities eligible again. But maybe, it's okay if we, we don't know right now. But I think there were more opportunities opened up for uh, for funding, for grant funding for those. But just caution that if we don't know exactly what the increase on that capital uh purchase and upgrade and expansion for the transit facility, we may want to have a little bit of powder or dry in surplus. This one too.
Thank you. Director Horn.
Yes, uh, thank you for the questions from Director Lum because they prompted me uh to recognize I might have made an assumption. We're looking at an operational budget, so I assumed that the saving surplus was meant for service stabilization and not necessarily transfer to capital reserves. And I may have been mistaken in that. And then as a subset of that, my understanding would be that this use of reserves was across all of the light items in the previous slides, which essentially cover most of the region or much of the region, as opposed to a facility where that might just serve some of these uh particular um lines or some of these value-added services. So uh perhaps some clarity from finance on exactly what we mean by the surplus or a transfer to reserve here. Um, and how, what's the process look like if there is a desire to take money out of something that's a surplus and put it into a capital budget that might apply just to some portions of our region?
Thank you for the question. Um, yeah, so this, this is surplus. You're right. It's not just for capital. Um, and because the, the capital is not ours, it's BC Transit's, it would have to come from surplus, not a reserve for capital reasons.
Thank you. So that's, that's where my remarks were that this would likely not have a utility other than if we had some operational challenge, a bunch of buses broke down or uh, God forbid, we would ever have a strike and have to give free transit service for a month afterwards. That, those are the sorts of things I think it's been used for in the past, if I'm not mistaken.
Director Pranger.
Um, thank you. Much as I don't like to see a tax increase, uh this is a service that is extremely important to a lot of people, including um those less fortunate than some of us and for students. Um, so I will be supporting this budget um in, for that reason alone.
Thank you. Director Fazio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I concur with Director Pranger's comments. It took her many, many years to get the bus into our community. Before that, we used to have the Greyhound bus and that was it. So um I believe any, any, if there is an increase, it's well worth it because um people need transportation. A lot of people who cannot drive or don't have a license are unable to drive anymore. And this, this does give them the opportunity. I know in Harrison Hot Springs, it's become a great, a great um service to our community to get people just into Agassi and to our neighbors. So it's a very important issue and I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Director Dickey.
Yeah, just quickly, uh, not quite sure why there is municipal EA transit funding line, line item and also member tax requisition. That's a bit of a technical question. I can talk to you about that later.
Yeah, and, and we'll look into that. Um, I, it might have been mislabeled um because I'm showing the tax requisition at the three hundred and thirty seven thousand, but we'll definitely look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, please continue.
Already found it. There you go. Um, so just, just to clarify that fourteen thousand nine hundred, the municipal EA transit funding, that's actually a grant in place of taxes. So uh for crown properties or um properties that we can't directly tax. Okay, so our next service area is our Fraser Valley Express. This is service area three oh seven and it's for Abbotsford and Chilowack. So this is the transit service between Chilowack, Abbotsford and Lowheed Town Center. Um, the highlights of this plan are a six percent requisition in twenty twenty five and an eighteen percent in twenty twenty six. And this does take into account critical service fix um late in twenty twenty four and January twenty twenty five. Um, the au- annual operating agreement increase for between twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five is fourteen percent. And again, this one uses surplus to soften taxation. So the challenges for this one are a continued high demand, um requiring more frequent expansions. Again, the fuel and operating cost increases and the full, first full year under a new collective agreement. Um, this one also considers the transit facility and the new UMO electronic fare technology costs. For this service specifically, um there is, it includes a potential ninety five, ninety five hundred hour expansion in twenty twenty six if approved by the board. And on screen are the financials. So again, you can see that BC Transit line is in that consulting and contract services. Um, and use of surplus um is resulting in a one point four million dollar surplus in twenty twenty nine.
All right, Director Lum.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, one question related to this and then one just broader on the transit and these, the different subregional service areas. So the first question is, the majority of those surplus, is that just uh revenue built up over time, transit revenue reflective of the, the, the fact that this is the only transit system in North America that makes money?
Um, yes, it is built up over time and I believe there is some effect from COVID as well in there.
Some COVID restart money in there? So that doesn't ever get uh refunded back into this service area participants. We've kept it there for, which is smart. So I like, I like that's, I like that because there's um with the increases that are proposed, so the ninety five hundred hours, that still has to be approved by BC Transit. But we'd have to commit to taxing for it now?
I'm just going to pass this one off to.
Sorry, okay.
Through the chair, and that would be for twenty twenty six taxation.
Yep.
So um we're keeping the um the, the increase um much less for, for twenty twenty five. Um, that's just to accommodate this um expansion most recently. And then twenty twenty six would be when this ninety five hundred hours, if the province approves that funding, um would kick in. Um, one of the things that we're really watching carefully is just how fast these hours are being consumed. Because what we're finding is that as soon as we increase capacity, that capacity is being taken up and we're getting a lot more revenue than we anticipated for that. So we're sort of taking a look if there's, what the connection is between adding hours and revenue. So some of these increases, we may not need to dip into the, the surplus um as much um going forward. But I am, again, really cognizant of the cost of the garage because the number of service hours that this service is now gaining a bigger chunk of the cost of that service is actually going to come down onto, to the uh FEX, just on service hour. So I'm, I'm wanting to keep the powder dry for those costs.
And twenty eighteen, or twenty, sorry, twenty twenty six is the eighteen percent increase that you just spoke about.
Yeah.
And so it's contingent on the province. It'll be contingent on if we have room to store the buses because that's one of the pieces that, that is going to constrain this system too. Okay, yeah, well, that makes sense. Thanks.
Right, thank you.
Okay, and our third and final transit budget is for the Hope line. So this service is for Hope, between Hope and along Highway seven, between Hope and Agassi. Um, the highlights of this plan are a fifteen percent requisition increase um and a ten percent increase in twenty twenty six. So this one again uses surplus to soften taxation. Um, the annual operating agreement increase um between twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five is sixteen percent for this one. So for the budget risks and challenges for this one, again, fuel and other operating costs. It is the first full year of that collective agreement. Um, UMO and the transit facility. On this one, there's additional revenues realized from providing services to First Nations as well. So again, um the BC Transit costs down here and we have that services to First Nations um as well broken out. You can see that in twenty twenty five is the last year of that surplus use. Okay, and if there are no questions, we have the resolution for transportation services.
What's up, Director Horn? So move, do we have a second here? Oh. All right, move by Director Pranger, seconded by Director Clu. No comments or questions?
Just a real quick one, sorry, and I forgot this. In uh budget number three oh eight, the service area participants, so just Hope and who?
It's correct, just Hope.
Just Hope, yeah, so I thought.
Okay, Director Siemens.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, just a general statement of, about the transit and it's always a bit of a challenge because this is a subsidized um program um heavily from, from DC Transit. But it's a partnership um that we have with BC Transit, I think is very important. And I just wanted to commend staff on, from a business owner's perspective. I know how challenging budgeting can be and sort of forecasting and there's always ebbs and flows, but I think the prudent approach that they've taken and, and just even with the, the surpluses, I know these are challenging issues some, from time to time. But I, I do appreciate the, the prudent approach and, and sort of the cautious approach because we don't know so, but some of those operational costs are going to be from the increase in rents. But this is important as, as Director Fazio and, and um Director Pranger have said that you know, there are people that are in the service industry, students, um people that just, the transportation costs are very expensive. And so this is a vital service. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that people also understood that it is heavily subsidized by BC Transit. So there is a provincial component and I think it really should be said that those relationships don't happen by accident. And so I know at the city, we have And so I know at the city, we have great relationships with BC Transit and but I know at the Fraser Valley Regional District and other member municipalities, those relationships don't happen by accident, they don't happen overnight. So just wanted to commend staff on that because it is a sometimes can be a bit of a hot potato out in in the public because there's a number of people that don't use the transit system. But there are also a number of people and these are vitally important to our economy. So just thought I'd mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Director Pranger?
Yes, thank you. I'm happy to support this because it not only helps those who cannot drive, but those who are making a conscious choice to take the bus instead of driving cars for their own. And it also helps U F V be more successful. Yes, there is a shuttle bus, but many times that doesn't work for the students. And this is, I think, important to keep our student population have the ability to gain an education without living in the city. And I'm very appreciative of the service for them as well.
Thank you. Director Smith?
Yeah, I'll also support this. I know during the strike, it was very hard for our little community. We had a lot of people had to find other ways to find rides and then some of them didn't come back to transit. I think it will come back. It's a it's a long term vision here. But we we need to stay the course and I think it will get stronger with time. But like you said, there's a lot of people can't afford it any other way. And and I I look forward to it coming back to better and better, especially in our area connect with, you know, Chilliwack and Agassi and that mission too. So thank you.
Director Horn?
I just was gonna ask, Madam Chair, would you come back to me following Director Lum's comments? I think we should do a little advocacy to the province based on how this vote goes. So I'll just ask that you come back to me after that before we proceed with the presentation.
Okay. All right, Director Clu.
Thank you. Just a a comment, I guess. Is there an opportunity to monitor the revenue and and make sure that the fare box match matches the ridership?
Yeah, through the chair, I'm constantly following the revenues of this coming in and and asking for data on the ridership. But it's it's exploded since COVID and exploded since the introduction, the introduction of the the Burnaby Service. So the 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 EMO fares are syncing with the cash fares and the EMO are that's straight on the buses where that's being tapped. So we're definitely getting a sense of that really is the ridership that we're seeing.
Okay, thank you.
Director Lum?
Oh, I just say really appreciate that question because there's always the anecdotal, you know, stories that you hear about fare evasion and people just jumping on and riding the bus free out of Metro Vancouver into the Fraser Valley. And so I think making, you know, with especially with electronic fare collection and stuff like that, getting the amount of data, the most amount of data that we can to to make sure that we're confident that, you know, that the system is is set up to protect against that kind of fare evasion and free rides. And we are just continually adding more hours and and not realizing that in the in the fare box. So it's a good question. Yeah.
Hmm, okay, I think we're ready to call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion's carried. Director Horn?
Thank you. I'd like to move that under the signature of the chair, we write to the premier and the new minister of transportation and transit to ask that the provincial government robustly fund transit initiatives in our region. And if there's a second, you're all very quickly speak to it.
Seconded by Director Pranger?
Thank you. I think the questions raised by Director Lum and I think our colleagues in Chilliwack raised them over the last year are reflective of a desire and the passion I just heard in this room. We have, I think, a vision for connectivity through the region and into metro. And it's not going to get less clearly with the housing initiatives the province has undertaken. Transportation is going to be critical and transit is going to be a core part of that, of course, with climate change. And so I really want to make sure that as a region, we're using our collective voices to ask for consistency in this funding. Because I think Director Lum's question includes sort of this idea that we are acting in goodwill first and we need to see that replicated or else bad, you know, it'll engender bad relations in the future as we try to really make further progress in in getting people to use transit. So I would encourage us to get that written as soon as possible and for staff to supply whatever data we have and whatever future planning we've been discussing.
Director Fazio?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a backup to Director regarding the latter, fully agree with that, but would it be also appropriate to go through a resolution to the local government, LMLGA, which will be forwarded to UBCM as well?
Madam Chair, I think first that the letter is just far lighter workload and just faster to act. I would strongly suspect that there already are a suite of of motions before, that have come before LMLGA and UBCM. I think that I recall, I think I recall some, I would certainly ask staff to take a look at that. And if there isn't something, I don't think it's objectionable. But I I think that the main thing is to just really invite the new minister to be an advocate in the same way that Minister Fleming was.
Madam Chair, I might just suggest that the Intergovernmental Relations Committee that's going to be meeting in the next week could consider Director Fazio's commentary. If there might be some LMLGA, UBCM resolutions pertaining to transit, they could discuss it at that table.
Thank you. Yes, took the words out of my mouth. I was about to make that point. Thank you, Director Lum.
Yeah, I'm just gonna mention yourself, stole my thunder on that one. It's okay. The other thing, you know, that I think constantly needs to get pointed out is that we're de facto running a regional transit authority out here through the through a partnership between the Fraser Valley Regional District and NBC Transit. The the thing we're doing it though, we're doing a disadvantage to the people, to the authority to the west of us where transit collects gas tax and other things. And in fact, many residents of the Fraser Valley Regional District help subsidize by buying gas in in the Metro Vancouver and help paying for their TransLink. Anytime you park, anytime you stay at a hotel or pay any of the fees they collect on that. So I think it's incumbent on the province to realize regional transit is arguably just a provincial responsibility and not really a local government one. But nonetheless, we've been undertaking it for them and doing a pretty damn fine job at it. So I think, you know, when they look at these kind of investments, we've been waiting far too long for the transit on the other side, on the north side of the Fraser. And so a a solid commitment from funding for the province to make it a priority, I think, is key. And I'm happy to to help that put our shoulders to wheel from the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee as well, so.
Yeah, Director Clu?
Thank you. Just add, I'll certainly support that. I think through the recent election campaign, the sitting government made reference to extending the West Coast Express through CN or CPR lines here into the into the Chilliwack-Abbotsford area. And and I I would suggest that they'll probably study that to death and who knows for how long. And this would be a much bigger bang for the buck. They are expanding the the Highway one with bus only lanes as well. So yeah, I'm certainly happy to support this.
All right, call the question. All in favor? None opposed? Motion's carried.
Okay, so our next section is the Environmental Health Services. Within this category, we have four service areas, three regional and one sub regional. Mosquito control is the top one, number four hundred. So this service area is for floodwater mosquito control, ensuring we reduce them to a tolerable level. The budget has a new integrated pest management plan approved by the province for twenty twenty four to twenty twenty eight. Air quality is our next budget on the list. This budget we will be going into detail on for this category. It is air quality monitoring for the region. Regional solid waste is also in this list. This service is not funded by taxation, but through tonnage levies. And the plan includes initiating the process to update the solid waste management plan. And finally, in this section, we have the invasive weed control. This service is to reduce the spread and impact of noxious weeds. It is for Chilliwack-Abbotsford area C, D, E, G and H. And so today, we will be going through the air quality unless there's a desire to look at any more of these. Okay, so looking at air quality, the purpose is to raise awareness and see continuous improvements in ambient air quality. For this plan, there is the Climate Action Planning Studies and relocation of the Mission Air Quality Station in twenty twenty five. So ongoing initiatives, continued implementation of the FODI's Air Quality Management Plan, air quality in the classroom program, the local government climate action program reporting requirement and asset management planning for air quality stations and equipment. Budget risks and challenges. So the impacts of climate change emphasizes the growing importance for air quality, monitoring advisories and identification of clean air spaces. So relevant priorities from the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty six strategic plan include reducing corporate GHG emissions, reducing regionwide GHG emissions, enhance resiliency to climate change and improve air quality. For this service, there is two mandatory proposed projects on the list here for twenty twenty five. They include the studies needed to support climate action planning and the relocation of the Mission Air Quality Monitoring Station. And so the studies are seventy five thousand dollar cost funded by savings and taxation. These are previously committed in the strategic plan. And the relocation of the Mission Air Quality Station is funded by this, by savings of eighty thousand dollars. Looking at the full five year horizon, projects and initiatives. So again, you'll see those twenty twenty five projects that we just spoke about. But looking at twenty twenty six, the Climate Action Planning, modeling and analysis for fifty five thousand and the twenty twenty seven to twenty twenty nine climate action planning estimated or forecasted to be twenty thousand dollars per year. And finally, looking at the financials. You can see some of those, that project for the Air Quality Station. We have our wood stove replacement project and transferred to savings for future years. If there's no questions, I will move on.
Oh, sorry. There is, Dr. Davidson.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question through to staff. At the beginning of this term, I think there was some discussion about revised greenhouse gas targets. In that timeline you've laid out, where would the greenhouse gas target revisions occur?
Hi, thank you for the question through the chair. We're in the process currently of doing a GHG inventory for the region and this is going to help identify all the different emission sources. That is going to help inform the next step, which is going to be developing a mitigation plan. That mitigation plan will include looking at various GHG targets and what might be appropriate for the local government services. We do anticipate that probably to happen probably not in twenty twenty five, maybe late twenty twenty five or early twenty twenty six is our timeline.
So is there any plan to do, you you qualify that by saying a local government services, but the region as a whole? I'm pretty sure every other local government, provincial level and federal level sets overall greenhouse gas targets. Ours is pretty light compared to what most others. And my understanding was is the staff would be looking at revising those targets. But I'm not hearing that in your response. I'm just wondering, is this just kind of dropped off the the radar?
I'll just jump in and we are looking at those regional targets as well. It certainly hasn't dropped off the radar. We will be assessing those regional targets to align with provincial standards and federal requirements as well as looking at what services local governments offer that can be improved in terms of GHG efficiencies.
So should we expect to see revise, again, coming back to my original question for those regional targets? What's the timeline for having revise revisions before us?
We're anticipating this mitigation plan to be happening in twenty twenty six. So I'll I'll state that at this point. It's a soft timeline at this point, though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director Horn?
I'm hoping this is a quick answer. Wood stove replacement project seems like a very small item and not much money to do much. So perhaps somebody can give me the postage stamp summary of that program.
Hey, I'd love to jump in there too, through the chair. The Woodstove Exchange Program, I believe it's called the Community Wood Smoke Reduction Program. It is a program that we help administer on behalf of the province that provides funding to provide incentives for people to swap swap out their old polluting wood stove and replace it with something more efficient, usually electric. We provide rebates on behalf of the province for this program.
So is that budget, Mr. Lilly, for the budget, for the replacement or for just administration? Is it helping folks to get access to a provincial fund or do we tap out five thousand dollars worth of rebates annually?
This this is the provincial fund, so they would give us something like five thousand dollars a year. We administer that and it's five hundred dollars per rebate. It goes directly to the homeowner when they provide evidence that they've destroyed the old wood stove. It is a replaceable fund. And so whenever that fund gets drawn down, we can apply to the province for replenished costs.
So we are funding ten or eleven wood stoves per annum?
It's a fairly small program.
Let my facial expression do the talking on this one.
Come to our resolution.
We have a motion before us. Would anyone care to make the motion? Moved by Director Fazio. Do we have a second or Director Adamo? Seeing no comments or questions, all in favor of the motion? Anyone opposed? Motion's carried.
Okay, so our next section is the Environmental Development Section. So there are two services in this category. So we will be going through the regional strategic planning and initiatives. This is a regional budget. Also on the, in this category is the Regional Mapping Service. This is for Hope and Harrison. And the the budget is to continue to support mapping for those branded web maps. So going into the regional strategic planning budget. So the purpose of this is administering the regional growth strategy and undertaking studies and initiatives of regional interest as directed by the board. And this is a small increase for requisition of one percent. And all the projects within this service are funded by savings. Ongoing initiatives include climate adaptation and resiliency, GHG for GHG inventory updates, industrial and employment land inventory and review and liaising with the province on regional transportation transit related initiatives. So budget risks and challenges for this service area are unanticipated project requests outside of budgeted work program, new provincial legislation, policy requirements and pending rural transit solution fund application, which I have confirmed, we're, we still have not heard on that one. So for this service area, we have a list of discretionary projects. So starting at the top, the Climate Action Project of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is funded by savings. This is phase two. We also have the Rural Transit Needs Assessment and Action Plan funded by a grant of seventy five thousand. This one, we have been approved for Fraser Health of 25. And there is an application pending for $50,000. There's a $30,000 cost for housing-related initiatives funded by savings and a planning lab funded by $30,000 of savings as well. So the planning lab, just to elaborate on that, is engaging local governments and First Nations staff on desired topics. And there is an event being planned for 2025.
Director Pranger?
What is a planning lab?
So the planning lab is staff getting together to discuss these topics, if I'm understanding that 100%. And I I'll let Allison expand on that.
Through the chair, this came out of the board's strategic planning session was to have planning labs. So we're acting on the board's direction for that. And it's aimed at sharing knowledge around the region, but with both local government staff and First Nations. We conducted, we've just finished doing a survey of planners, local government planners and First Nations, and got a really actually a pretty good response of the type of topics that they would want to look at. We want to create something that is a value add. People, you know, increasingly what we're hearing is they don't really want sort of big general policy type thing. They really are looking for things that they can use in their day-to-day work. So that's that's sort of the direction we're looking at. If people are going to take their time to participate in these events, we want them to be value-add for everyone.
All right, Director Lam?
Thank you. The, in one of the previous slides, I think there was an update or a project identified, maybe the other one there, industrial employment line inventory. I have a question about perhaps the scope of that one to include and identify longstanding brownfield sites in the region. This is, and I don't know if it fits under that industrial employment land. Oftentimes, the land that has been sitting vacant and derelict in brownfield state is former industrial land. But, you know, there's some that would maybe fit outside of that scope. But I increasingly, with less and less of this land available, it makes sense throughout the region to have an idea of what exists out there and in what state it's in. So you chillack, for example, you've got a couple of high-profile sites that have been sitting empty. They're former petrochemical sites or something. They've just been set empty for years and years and years and years. There's no benefit to the to the landowner to do anything with it, really, because there's often not any improvements on it. So the tax or the assessed value stays the same. Meantime, we're getting squeezed on housing and industrial shortage land. So basically getting, make the point quickly is to get to a place where we can start to make the case that the province needs to do something to move on these sites, to move to either help get them cleaned up and for sale and back into into productive state. But I think the first step would be identifying just how much is out there. And then being able to say, this is the value essentially of vacant, derelict land that's sitting in our region right now. And you need to get on, you know, incentivizing or either incentivizing the owners to clean it up or disincentivizing, leaving it vacant and derelict and sitting there. So it's a question of a little bit outside budget, but planting a seed for the planning lab or any discretionary dollars that are going to be associated with this service area.
Good point. Director Pranger?
Thank you, and thank you for that question. Does that would that it includes employment lands? So those would also be the lands within the town centers that are sitting vacant because decisions have not been made in a timely manner. And it is very harmful to the development of the communities.
Please continue.
Okay. Just going to skip over to our resolution for this section.
All right, do we have a mover? Moved by Director Dresen, Second Director Gill. No more comments or questions, all in favor? Any opposed? None carried?
Okay, so we are on our last section. So this is the Recreation and Culture Section. In this category, we have six budgets. So starting from the top, we have Regional Parks East. This is a subregional budget. We will be going through this one in detail today. The second one on the list is the Hope Recreation Arena and Pool. This is also subregional, and we will be going through this one as well. 710, we have our Hope and Area Recreation Programming. The service is for, are funded by Hope, Area A and Area B. And the service is for providing recreation programming such as fitness classes and events like Canada Day and Family Day aimed at enhancing community engagement and health. 716 is our Experience the Fraser budget. This is a regional budget. However, there's no taxation for this service. The service in 2025 will use the remainder of the savings to complete the active transportation project. 731 is our Vetter River Campground. This is a subregional budget, but it is a business unit of 700, the Regional Parks East. There's no taxation for this service area. However, as a business unit of the Regional Parks East, it is anticipated to support the Regional Parks Initiative starting in 2026. And finally, we have our Subregional Parks West. This is a subregional budget as well, funded by Abbotsford and a small portion of Area G. And we will go through this one in detail today as well. And before I move into going through 700, just want to confirm if there's any other budgets anyone would like to discuss.
Director Horn?
716, if it's not already intended, thank you.
Sure, of course. Anyone else? No? All right. Thank you. Okay, starting with 700. So this is our Regional Parks East. It's for Chillack, Harrison, Hope, Mission, Kent, and the electoral areas. So the service is operations and maintenance of nine regional parks and three regional trails. A focus on asset life cycling, park strategic plan updates, and strategic planning initiatives such as the land acquisition strategy. Ongoing initiatives for this service are asset management planning for funding future replacements and planning for future park and trail initiatives. Budget risks and challenges for this service are the rising cost of labor, supplies, and infrastructure projects. There's an increasing demand for services and climate change impacts. Other considerations are to review the resource requirements to reflect operational costs, asset replacement planning and customer needs, which has been done for this financial plan. Alignment with future opportunities with community aspirations. And the Parkland acquisition that is not resourced. Okay, so we have quite a few project slides to go through. So on the screen you have discretionary projects. These ones are planned for 2025 and funded through savings, and so you have a mixture of low and medium risk. So for 2025, for the Island 22 Dog Park Fence Extension and Equestrian Life Cycle Replacement for the Post and Rail. Shiam Lake Life Cycle Floating Boardwalk and the Thompson and Nielsen Picnic Table Life Cycle Replacements. Our next section is also for 2025, so funded by savings and again a mixture of low and medium risk. So we have Phase One of the Land Acquisition Strategy and Regional Park Strategic Plan. Vehicle Life Cycle Replacement, Elk and Shiam Trails Erosion Repair, and the KVR Rock Scaling Project. Okay, and I'll just pause. If anyone has any questions on the proposed project slides before we get into the five-year.
Director Dixon?
Thank you. I have a couple. Just why is it a risk if the dog fence park isn't extended? Does that just, you're making it bigger or the plan is to make it bigger?
Okay, I'll just hand that over to Christina to comment on.
Thank you for the question. We have a large dog park at Island 22, for those of you who've been there, fully fenced. There's a small on-dog, off-leash area as well as a large dog off-leash area. One of the sides was never completed with fencing and is winded with blackberries as a natural fence. However, we are getting increasing concerns raised to us about dogs escaping into the blackberries and injuries happening. And so it is sort of, I guess, a risk in terms of the dog health to be able to have more of a contained fence in that area.
Okay, thank you. I have one more if I could. What was it? Hang on. Oh, it's the same kind of thing like I do understand elk and sham trails, like the erosion. Are those, those are our trails that we maintain all the time on a regular basis?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So looking at the five-year horizon for projects. There's a few slides on here. I just want to make a note that in the published slide deck, there was an annual cost here, and I've just cleared that for the materials. And before we put them out on our Have Your Say site, I'll make sure that's updated. Most of the multi-year projects are combined totals, not annual, so I just don't want to make sure it's $100,000 for three years. So looking at this list on the screen, you have the 2025 life cycle projects as listed on the previous slides, as well as the KVR Landside Repair. In 2025, 2026, we have the Land Acquisition Strategy as well as the Regional Park Strategic Plan. And last on the list here is the KVR Rock Scaling. That's 2025, 2027, and 2029. So again, totaling $105,000. So looking at our vehicle life cycle replacements throughout 2025 to 2029, the total will be three, just over $300,000. As well, looking at the Elk and Shiam Erosion Trail Repair, $100,000. The Dudney Post and Rail Picnic Table Life Cycles. Island 22 Day Use and Boat Launch Post and Rail Life Cycle Replacements. Shiam Lake Parking Lot Life Cycle Replacements, and the Island 22 Bike Park Kiosk Picnic Table and Trail Life Cycle Replacements. And our final slide for this five-year horizon, we are in 2027 right now, so planning for 2027 to 2029. So Island 22 Equestrian Area Parking, as well as the Bike Park Wood Features and Jumps Life Cycle, Nielsen Post and Rail Life Cycle, Picnic Table Life Cycle at Island 22, the Thompson Park Post and Rail Life Cycle, and picnic shelters as well. Okay, so looking at the financials. A lot of projects. Just looking at the financials, again, the tax requisition is up top here. There is some park revenue coming directly from user fees collected. And recovery from other services is our community parks for staff cost. Director Wardenburg?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Quick question, as far as the reserve funds, as far as capital and land. I am assuming that there's strictly, you can't interchange the two, you can't use the capital savings for land or the land portion for, or the the portion of the capital for acquisition of land?
Just to clarify, so the the reserve savings for capital could be used for land. That would be considered capital, but land can't be used for capital purchase, so it can only be used for purchasing land.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Director Dickey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a little peripheral to the discussion, but the Elk or the Mount Shiam Trail upkeep. The, we met with the Forest Minister a couple of years ago at UBCM to discuss improvements to the road access up there, and I was surprised how interested he was in that project. I think there's a really good argument that that resource is more provincial than regional. There's people coming from all over the lower mainland to use it. I wonder if it wouldn't be worthwhile for some representation from the board to meet with the province about getting some kind of an investment at the provincial level in that recreational area.
Through the chair to Director Dickey, I might suggest again, that sounds like an advocacy item that you might want to put forward through to either the EA Advocacy Committee or the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. I'm not really sure that that would be a position for staff at the Parks Team to make a case for. I think that it would be better served at the political level.
All right, Director Wardenburg?
Yeah, through the chair to staff, just a question on the new closing laws and the potential for ACCs to fund regional parks. Is there a potential if the board approves that?
If I may, through the chair?
Yep.
Yeah, I'd like to refresh my memory on what's included in the list of AAC eligible projects, but I do believe that Parks would be eligible for AACs if the board wants to go in that direction.
Let's go ahead. Okay, so moving over to our Hope and Electoral Area B Arena and Swimming Pool. So the purpose of the service area is for recreation access to the Arena Aquatics Fitness and Conference Center. There is minimal maintaining stability for tax increases as well as sustainable upgrades. Ongoing initiatives for this one are facility upkeep, so continuous maintenance and upgrades, equipment renewals, energy efficiency focusing on solutions like the HVAC improvements, and sustainable service, so commitment to quality and financial stability. Budget risks and challenges for this service area are the rising operational costs, including energy and equipment maintenance. Failure to approve the proposed budget may delay essential maintenance and equipment upgrades impacting service quality. Unapproved budget risks, risk the inability to meet long-term financial sustainability goals, leading to potential service disruption. So there are mandatory projects and discretionary projects on in the slide deck. So starting with mandatory, there is 2025 replacement of dehumidifier funded by savings, as well as a pool mechanical room sprinkler pipe replacement, $10,000 with savings, and the sand filter replacement, $120,000 with savings as well. Looking at the discretionary projects in 2025, land is an electric Zamboni funded by savings, $210,000, as well as fitness equipment upgrades, $28,000 also funded by the savings. Looking at our five-year horizon, so you'll see those infrastructure upgrades, five hundred and seventy-six thousand. Twenty twenty-six Facility Enhancements totaling two hundred and three thousand. Safety and Structural Improvements totaling two hundred and eighty-three. Modernization and Safety in 2028. And 2029 Arena Siding and Fitness. And we can expand on any of those projects if, if there's questions.
Director Dammel?
Thanks very much. With respect to 2029 Arena Siding, is that like the external siding of the building? Or is that the siding on the inside of the facility?
Thank you. That is the exterior, exterior metal cladding on the building.
Well, as a follow-up, sorry, that seems a little excessive. I mean, I know, I'm certain I'll get questions about something like that to, to change the external siding as opposed to painting it, for example? Is that something that's an absolute necessity?
So that cost is not the entirety of that line item. There's many other projects going into that line item. That's a, a very generalization of what is scheduled to happen in 2029. But I can say that we have had some preliminary, preliminary design, actually, looking at how to upgrade or repair the outside of that arena, which is fine for now. Um, it's just come to the end of its lifecycle. Um, there are some decisions need to be made by the board eventually in terms of we want to go with a more insulated model than we do now, which would cost more. But our estimates now are looking, I believe, in the four to five thousand dollar, hundred thousand dollar range.
Thanks.
Okay, and looking at the financials, so this one is it's a longer list, but it has some user fees built into it as well as taxation, as well as grants and the transfer from savings. So a big piece of this is, is those capital replacements and lifecycle replacements.
Questions, comments, no? Alright, I think we're good to move on?
And we just have a slide here on the Hope Arena Heat Recovery Project, if there's any questions on that.
It doesn't look like it.
Okay. Oops, too far. Okay, so looking at the Experience the Fraser, um, so this service area is implementation of Experience the Fraser Initiative, so it's finalizing the BC Active Transportation Network Plan and participate in Destination BC's Management Council. So budget risks and challenges, trail and supporting infrastructure are limited to securing grant funding. So there is, we are finishing up using the savings in 2025, um, which I will show here. So the Active Transportation Related Projects, nineteen thousand dollars, and that's funded from that savings that we have in the service area.
Director Horn?
Thank you, just, um, I'm not gonna take a lot of time today, but I know that this, this item made me go back and do a blast from the past, and this project was funded back in two thousand and nine. Um, and so seeing it come to a close, it raises a few questions for me, not about the budget this year, but about implications for the future and expectations. So to keep it simple today, I'll just ask through the chair that maybe at a future meeting we might ask our team in Destination BC to present on what's in the offing for the last year and how far we got, implications for the future. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so our last budget to talk about today is the Regional Parks West. So this service is for Abbotsford and a portion of Area G. The purpose of the service area is operations and maintenance of the Matzwee Trail Regional Park, Glen Valley Regional Park, and Sumas Mountain Regional Park. Um, key highlights of the plan are the Matzwee Trail Pit Toilet Upgrades and Chadzie Lake Trail Improvements. So ongoing initiatives are asset management planning for future replacements and planning for future park and trail initiatives. Similar to our East, Parks East budget, it's, the risks and challenges are the rising cost of labor supplies and infrastructure projects, increasing demand for the service, climate change impacts, and the Chadzie Lake Trail shifted to 2025. Other considerations are the review, of review of resource requirements to reflect costs of future needs and alignment of future park and trail opportunities with community aspirations. So for this service area, we have two discretionary proposed projects. We have that Matzwee Trail Pit Toilet Upgrade and the Chadzie Lake Trail, Trail Updates, both funded by savings totaling a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Looking forward at the five-year plan, in addition to those two, we have a vehicle lifecycle replacement, 2026 and 2029, the Glen Valley Boardwalk Replacement, Matzwee Page Road Upgrades, Sumas Park Management Plan, and Sumas West Flank Trail. And finally, we have the service area financials here, so again, tax requisition up top. And we can see some of those projects landing in that capital additions line item.
Okay, thank you, any questions? Director Gibson?
Yeah, uh, thank you. This is the, something that's of a particular interest to me, protecting this parkland right here on the heart of the valley and in the eastern flank of our community. So I'm, I'm excited to support this. However, I, I have a bit of a concern about the Chadzie Lake Trail Upgrade. Probably most of you will not know where that is, it's right on the top of Sumas Mountain. And it's a real fragile little lake. There's no water flowing into it and there's no water flowing out of it. So the, the water quality could be threatened very easily by people accessing it. So I'm not sure what to elaborate anymore on that, Madam Chair. Uh, but a trail spending a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to get a whole bunch of people to Chadzie Lake worries me. Uh, it's, that lake is probably maybe four or five times the size of this room. It's a very small, very pristine, beautiful little lake. And I really worry, as a, an Abbotsford resident and someone who hikes that area, knows that area really well, I would discourage us actually from putting a trail into that lake. I don't think it's gonna help that lake. And you get people camping around it and throwing garbage into it, that lake will be destroyed in a matter of a few years.
Did anyone want to comment on the eco-sensitivity of that particular area?
What we can do is, my understanding from Mr. Urban and Christina Wegdaveen is that people are, are going off-trail now into that area anyway, and so there are some concerns that need to be addressed. Um, but we can do further consultation with the board uh, before development would be underway.
So what you're trying to do is redirect them from going into areas that they should not be going and guiding them more to an area where it's more appropriate, and that's the reason for the trail?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Thanks. Director Siemens?
Uh, thank you, yeah, just to that point, that trail is, is highly used already. Um, and I think if we can upgrade and, and protect some areas where we shouldn't be going, I think that would be really prudent, and I, I suspect that's what the plan is, so I'm happy to hear that. But yeah, I mean, the challenge in that area is that for years, people have probably been making their own trails and doing some things that maybe they shouldn't be doing. So I'm hoping, and I know we're working with First Nations on that too, so I appreciate Director Gibson's concerns, and I think they've been heard, but I, I'm also confident that, that we've got a good management plan. But look forward to hearing a little bit more, but I suspect this trail doesn't go just to the lake, it goes to the peak, and there's a whole host of other things that I think are probably included, but happy to hear more, thank you.
Thank you. Director Ferguson?
Thank you, I just was wondering if staff could speak a little bit to the line item, the Consultants and Contract Services line item, and what that covers, what's
Thank you for the question, through the chair. And the Consultants and Contract Services are, is made up of a couple of things. The, the main cost associated with that is the Operations and Service Maintenance Agreement that we have, the Fraser Valley Regional District has with the City of Abbotsford. Uh, the City of Abbotsford Parks Team actually does the daily operation and maintenance of that, of Glen Valley as well as Matzwee Trail Regional Park. The remainder of it is just, is in relation to danger trees and some trail maintenance and things that we do up on Sumas Mountain. Um, but it, for 2025, it's projected at six hundred and twenty-one thousand for the City of Abbotsford.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more questions? Oh. Alright, do we have a mover? Moved by Director McHonnick, second Director Siemens. Seeing no more questions, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion's carried. Any more questions? Do we have ques, are we looking for questions of the public at this point?
Oh, we can certainly get to that part of the agenda, but I think that the intention from our finance team was just to have any wrap-up questions that did not be lingering from members of the committee.
That, that's correct, thank you.
I don't think we do.
Okay. Okay, well with that, thank you.
Oh, Director Reed, thank you.
Sorry, if I may, I just
I'm there at the last second.
Rather than a question, just want to commend the staff for the work that went into this two hundred and sixty-page PowerPoint presentation. And thank you for all the hard work and being able to answer random questions that came about to you, and just excellent work putting this all together, so thank you for that.
Yes, thank you, Director Reed. I, I as well want to thank staff for their outstanding work, and it's mind-boggling amount of preparation that brought this to the board, so thank you very much for that, and I'm continually amazed by how prepared you are for any question that might come up. I, I don't think we stumped you once, for maybe for five seconds once, but, but you came through in the end. So thank you so much, and thank you as well to this whole board for your dedication and your great questions and decisions, thank you so much.
So Chair Ross, that would take us to the public question period for items relevant to the agenda, and I would just note that we do not have any members of the public joining us here in person in the boardroom, but we will turn things over to our Deputy Corporate Officer, Lauren Olennick.
Thank you, Ms. Kineman, we do not have any members of the public joining us online today, and we have not received any written correspondence.
But just a note to the public, though, who may watch this later, that we do welcome their input and would love to hear from them.
Absolutely, thank you Chair Ross. So now I would be looking for a resolution to go into the closed session.
Oh, move, Madam Chair.
Moved by Director Pasio, second Director Gibson, all in favor? An opposed, carried?
If you just give me two minutes to set up the room?
May need five.
Or six.
Yeah, no kidding. No kidding. What a slave.